Good evening. I would like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for August the 26th, 2024. If you would please stand as you were able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Rachel Holting.
Present.
Amanda Weaver. Corey Stites.
Here.
Janice Hoppe. Dan Larson.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, in your packet you have the study session notes of August the 5th, 2024, and City Council meeting minutes for August the 12th of 2024. Are there any changes or corrections to be noted in the minutes for the study session notes? Seeing none, we will let these documents stand approved with our thanks to the clerk as submitted, and I'm pleased to announce that Councilperson Hoppe has been able to join us today, thank you. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda as presented? Seeing none, we will move with the agenda as presented, and we have a proclamation today, and I will go to the podium. And I would like to invite Jessica Mitchell with the Jefferson Center Community Engagement Coordinator to join me at the podium. Good evening, how are you? Good, thank you for joining us today. I'm really pleased to have a proclamation recognizing the National Suicide Prevention Month of September. Whereas National Suicide Prevention Month in conjunction with National Suicide Prevention Week is an annual month-long campaign in the United States to inform and engage health professionals and the general public about suicide prevention and the warning signs of suicide. And whereas, by drawing attention to the problem of suicide in the United States, the campaign also strives to reduce the stigma surrounding the topic, as well as encourage the pursuit of mental health assistance and support people who have attempted suicide. And whereas, as part of the campaign, health organizations are encouraged to conduct depression screenings, including self-administered and online tests, and refer interested individuals to a National Suicide and Crisis Hotline. You can call or text 988, or chat at 988lifeline.org. And whereas, since 1975, National Suicide Prevention Week awareness events are held throughout the week corresponding to World Suicide Prevention Day, which is recognized annually on the 10th of September. And whereas, the city provided funding to Jefferson Center to recertify their suicide prevention coordinator to be a QPR, question, persuade, refer, instructor, to help save lives by leading practical steps, by teaching practical steps to anyone anyone can take when they are concerned about someone who may be in a crisis. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do proclaim that September be Suicide Prevention Month and the week of September 8th through 14th, 2024 be declared Suicide Prevention Week in the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, due to this 26th day of August, 2024. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Starker, and good evening, City Council members. My name is Rebecca Mitchell, and I am the Suicide Prevention Coordinator at Jefferson Center. On behalf of the board and staff at Jefferson Center, I want to express our deep gratitude for issuing this proclamation and recognizing September a Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Wheat Ridge. Suicide is not just a statistic or a public health issue. It is profound, it is tragic, and in some way, it has affected everyone in this room. Over the last decade, deaths by suicide have risen. In 2022 alone, 1,352 individuals in Colorado, including 123 members of our community in Jefferson County, lost their lives to suicide. The pain left behind is everlasting, leading to prolonged grief, shock, anger, guilt, and even mental health challenges for survivors. The major contributing factors are experiences of violence, including child abuse, bullying, sexual assault. Veterans, those in rural areas, workers in high-stress industries are also at higher risk. Additionally, young people who identify as LGBTQIA face a higher prevalence of suicidal thoughts compared to their peers. Our work in suicide prevention is not something we engage in merely because it is our job. We do this work because we understand on a deeply personal level the significance of lived experience, of loss, of pain, of grief, and of our own struggles. As the spouse of a veteran, I have attended more military funerals due to suicide than I care to count. This is not just a professional endeavor, it is a personal mission. With your support, we strive to infuse hope in this community by recognizing that these struggles are not insurmountable. Hope is nurtured by realizing the power of our connections and relationships within our community. The strength of family, community, and access to mental health care significantly reduces suicidal thoughts and behaviors. For children, having just one trusted adult in their life can make all the difference. At Jefferson Center, we are proud to lead the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Jefferson, Gilpin, and Clear Creek Counties. As the coordinator, I am honored to bring together passionate community members, including public health professionals, educators, and individuals with lived experience. Our mission: to provide and implement evidence-based strategies to foster connections, ensure access to critical care, and be proactive with strategies to prevent suicide. Every day, Jefferson Center provides mental health care, substance use treatment, wellness services, and a wide range of additional resources, touching nearly 27,000 lives annually in our community. We are dedicated to breaking down barriers that prevent people from seeking the care they deserve. This means offering services in over 150 community settings. These include schools, medical practices, partnerships with law enforcement, community centers, homeless shelters, and more. We know we cannot do this alone. We are grateful for our partnership with the city of Wheat Ridge, whose support is crucial to our efforts. As the proclamation states, your support has enabled us to teach QPR, question, persuade, refer, a life-saving intervention that equips people with skills to recognize the signs of a crisis and take action to prevent it. Your support is essential. Together, we can raise awareness, reduce the stigma around mental health, and work towards finding solutions that fit the needs of our community. But more importantly, I urge each of you to consider how you show up every day, as individual community members, as leaders, and as organizations. I challenge everyone in this room to reach out to someone this week and tell them that they are loved. Each step forward in the right direction proves our ability, as a community, to build relationships of care and compassion. By being present, by listening, by supporting one another, we build a community where hope can flourish. Thank you again for recognizing Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and for your continued support of Jefferson Center. We could not do this important work without you.
Thank you, Rebecca. We're going to do a little photo off here. Thank you, Rebecca, for bringing us that message, we appreciate it. We are now at our public's right to speak. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come and address their counsel. I have one person that has signed up to speak tonight, so when I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium and give us your first name and last name, let us know if you live in Wheat Ridge or work in Wheat Ridge, and you'll have three minutes to address the counsel. So our speaker is Kathy Nuanes.
Hello. My name is Kathy Nuanes. You're close.
Thank you.
N-U-A-N-E-S. I live at 3825 Urban Street here in Wheat Ridge, and I want to just thank you, council members, for letting me speak just briefly about my dear Color Strand Elementary that's now on its second year of being closed. With the abundance of development projects in the city of Wheat Ridge, I want to ensure that the future of Color Strand Elementary remains a priority. I'd like to remind you, if you don't already know, that Jefferson County Schools' recent addition to its property disposition process for all of these schools that they closed have another process called the Municipal Interest Process, which offers municipalities the chance to discuss and evaluate the use of closed school properties before they are marketed for sale. For instance, the cities of Arvada and Lakewood are actually involved in this process with two elementary schools that they are trying to repurpose for their cities. The Municipal Interest Process presents a valuable opportunity for Wheat Ridge to express interest in Color Strand Elementary. Despite its closure, the neighborhood activity uses the open space at the school as a pocket park. It enjoys the playground, the picnic areas, the sport fields, the basketball hoops, and the parking lots. I've personally seen my neighbors gathering for evening meals and playtime at the playground. Color Strand's prime location on 38th Avenue near the new developments in West Wheat Ridge and Lutheran Hospital underscores its potential. Ideally, it would be wonderful if Color Strand could remain an educational facility, but perhaps an arts and humanities center that could be an asset to both the city and the community. As a neighbor of Color Strand, I'm deeply invested in its future. Should Color Strand be designated as surplus, I would be interested in being appointed by the City Council to the Property Disposition Advisory Committee for Jeffco Schools specifically for Color Strand. Thank you for your attention and for considering the future of Color Strand as an ongoing community resource. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Hey, those are all the speakers that have signed up to speak. We will now go to our consent agenda. Counselor Larson, would you please introduce item number 1A and 1B?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on our consent agenda is Resolution Number 38, 2024, a resolution giving notice of and calling for a special municipal election to be held November 5th, 2024. At issue, the city charter calls for a municipal election every odd year to coincide with the elected terms of the offices of mayor, clerk, treasurer, and council. Municipal elections are not held in the city of Wheat Ridge on even number years unless a special election is warranted for a recall, referendum, or initiative set forth by the electorate or the council. In such cases, Charter Section 2.2 gives the council the authority to call a special election. City Council will refer to ballot questions to the electorate of the city of Wheat Ridge for the November 5th, 2024 general election. Therefore, the city of Wheat Ridge is required to formally call a special municipal election for this date. 1B? Okay. Thank you. The next item on the consent agenda is Resolution Number 39, 2024, a resolution authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute an intergovernmental agreement by and between the county of Jefferson, state of Colorado, and the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, regarding the administrative administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge will participate in a coordinated election on November 5th, 2024. The attached resolution and intergovernmental agreement must be executed and forwarded to Jefferson County by Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. The documents refer to the respective duties of the county and the city of Wheat Ridge regarding the administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election. The duties of the county clerk include, but are not limited to, ballot preparation, voter lists, staff selection, and training, providing election supplies, mailing of the ballots, counting of the ballots, and certification of the results. The duties of the city of Wheat Ridge included, but are not limited to, call and notice and ballot preparation. The city clerk shall act as the city of Wheat Ridge's election officer and the designated election official. The city clerk shall act as primary liaison between the city of Wheat Ridge and the contact officer for the county clerk and recorder.
Thank you very much. This is our consent agenda. May I have a motion on Agenda Item Number 1A and 1B?
Thank you, Mayor. On Agenda Item 1A, Resolution Number 38, 2024, I move to approve Resolution Number 38, 2024, a resolution giving notice of and calling for a special municipal election to be held November 5th, 2024.
And Number 1B also.
I move to approve Resolution Number 39, 2024, a resolution authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute an intergovernmental agreement by and between the county of Jefferson, state of Colorado, and the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, regarding the administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Will the clerk please poll the council?
All i's, no nays, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move to Agenda Item Number 2. Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 14-2024, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 5th, 2024 special municipal election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter related to building height at the former Lutheran Hospital campus. At issue, the Lutheran Legacy Campus LLC master plan was adopted in 2021, and implementation of the plan's vision requires that city charter be amended to modify the building height limitations of the campus. This ordinance sets the ballot language for the November 5th election, which is due to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder on September 6th.
Thank you. This will be an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Lauren Mikulak will add a little bit more context to this.
Okay, Director Mikulak.
Thank you. Just want to paint the picture of what has finally brought us to tonight. Tonight's a big milestone. It was about five years ago that we learned that Lutheran Hospital would be building a new campus, and it kind of forced this council and this community to think about the future and dream big about the future of 100 acres. It's about 12 city blocks in the middle of our community. We did that through the master planning process, as you well know, in 2020 and 2021, and tonight's question before you is a first major milestone in implementing that vision. That plan, as you know, calls for open space, it calls for integrating the Blue House and the chapel and other existing assets, it calls for an improved sidewalk network, for a variety of housing options, for civic presence, for some retail, not too much, but some retail, and it calls for investments that fundamentally complement the existing neighborhoods that surround that campus. Knowing that the hospital was moving this summer, throughout this year, both with council and the community, we've had the chance to talk about what it really means to implement the Lutheran Legacy Campus Master Plan, and tonight's action is, again, the first one that sort of converts that master plan vision to reality. You know that Wheat Ridge is unique, we're one of the few communities that regulates height through our city charter, we've done that since the 1980s. So 35 feet in most areas of the city is the limit for any building that has a residential unit within it, whether that's a single-unit home or a mixed-use development, and we limit on non-residential structures to 50 feet. That hospital, for reference, is 91 feet. We have some buildings, like the hospital, that exceed those limits. About 15 years ago, voters lifted those caps in two specific areas of the city on Wadsworth and along I-70, and in that case, we did that sort of more unilaterally, we just lifted the cap and used zoning to implement that. In this case, because that plan calls for very sort of granular compatibility, we thought it was more appropriate to write a ballot question that reflects that plan and reflects the need for this campus to have context-sensitive design. And so while at the start of the summer, we were talking about a question that just says, you know, shall heights exceed the charter but be less than the hospital? That wasn't specific enough, and through comment with the public and discussion with you all, we've refined the question that you see tonight, which makes two specific charter amendments. It lowers the permitted height on the perimeter of the site from our standard 35 down to 30 feet, and it allows in the middle of the campus buildings up to five stories or 70 feet, so still quite a bit lower than the existing hospital. Posing this question to voters is, again, it's really important in achieving the goals of the master plan. I've had a lot of conversations this summer, why would we ask this question? Why would we support this kind of a question? The way that the question is phrased, we think, reflects the integrity of the master plan. It guarantees shorter heights adjacent to those existing neighborhoods to the east, west, and south. It would free up land for open space and sidewalks and trails and plazas by clustering taller buildings in the middle of the site. It would allow a variety of housing types detached or attached to rent or to own, and it would provide some visual variety, so not all building heights are the same at that 35-foot or 50-foot limit. If the ballot question is approved tonight, certainly it's the voter's decision on what would happen on that campus in the future. After tonight, if it is advanced, it would go to the county, and it would appear on the ballots of Wheat Ridge voters this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Before we get a question from council, I would like to invite the public to speak on this. I have several people that have signed up to speak. Our first speaker is, and once again, like public comment, if you'd please come to the podium when I call your name, and give us your first name and your last name, and tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge. So our first speaker is going to be Jenny Shaver, and Joshua Meyer is on deck.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Shaver, I live at 8835 West 32nd Avenue. So yes, I live in Wheat Ridge. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I wanted to see a little context, I was on the original committee for the master plan back in 2021, and I was very excited to be part of that, and I've been involved, kind of been trying to educate my neighbors around the process since then. I'm also on the steering committee now, and I enjoy working on that, I have a lot of pride in that, and I think it's great that the city has worked so hard to try to engage people. We've had a lot of positive turnout and feedback at the center, or at the rec center, excuse me, when we had our meetings, and we put a lot of effort into that.
Excuse me, Ms. Shaver, I'm going to ask our clerk to turn off the timing lights, we're not going to time on this public hearing.
Sorry. Okay. Sorry about that. So one thing I've taken away from that is feedback from the community, and she can chime in as well, there's more involved in it, but is the patchwork quilt, people really feel a uniqueness about Wheat Ridge, having these separate neighborhoods that connect us, having this sort of uniqueness to our flavor of our communities, what makes Wheat Ridge stand out, and why do people move here? We don't want to look like Lakewood, Golden, or Arvada, a lot of these places are booming and blowing up these big housing developments, and so there's been feedback that people don't want that. I realized tonight, you guys are probably going to vote to put this on the ballot, and it really won't probably matter what I say, but as a committee member, I've taken it very seriously, and I really talk to my neighbors, people in the community and other districts, and I'm like, what do you guys see? What do you see as our future? And with the Lutheran legacy being part of that, it kind of ties in, I also live right by there. When I've asked people what they're wanting regarding this specific item, I have talked to a lot of people, not one person I've spoken to said they want 70-foot height limit. I know there was a survey that's gone out, I don't know who it all went to, the last card that went out or notification, it kind of was, I'll be honest, felt a little punitive, if you don't vote this way, you're not going to get X, and I've heard people say that. So just moving forward, I think language is really important when you're wanting to engage residents and their viewpoints to not come across that way. And that's just feedback they've shared with me, and once they said it, I was like, you're right, I kind of agree, it didn't come across that well. I think what I've found most recently is people didn't know, like, we were at second reading and all these things tonight, and it's okay, we're at that point, we're already there, but I feel it's important to go forward knowing education's important. People were looking for signage on the property. Well, where? Lutheran's a huge property. Were there signs posted? I don't know. But that was a question that was asked of me. The survey, who did it go to? I don't know. I am excited about growth and development, I think it's important to have responsible economic and environmentally safe development, both smart logistic and financial development, but also looking at Wheat Ridge as a whole, what makes our city unique in keeping that? I don't know that putting five-story buildings in the middle of a real neighborhood is good. Looking at the history of Wadsworth and I-70 where those adjustments were made, to me it makes sense, it's on a corridor, but we're talking in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Personally, I looked at the old Sandy Anthony's property, putting that kind of high development in the middle of a neighborhood doesn't seem right for Wheat Ridge. That's my opinion, as a native living through my whole life. The people that I've talked to are like, why would they do that? Well, probably the builder. So I just encourage, as we go through this process, to think about what the residents want, not just what the potential builder wants who buys the property. There's a lot at stake there. I think just connecting the community as a whole and keeping their trust, I think people are more open because there's been more engagement, and that's been good, but they want to continue to see that, and they're excited about that for our city. So it's kind of just my thoughts there. I'm very appreciative that I'm on the committee, I enjoy it quite a bit, so I'm just hoping that I can continue to represent my neighbors and people in the community well and bring their voice forward when they can't come and speak, but that you guys also listen and hear what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joshua Meyer, and Amy Lewinsky on deck.
Evening. Name is Joshua Meyer, I live at 8835 West 32nd Avenue, and yes, Jenny is my wife, in full disclosure, I am in full concordance with her on everything she said. I'm honored and very pleased that I have the opportunity to speak, and I'm glad that you guys offered that. I would ask, though, is it possible to have maybe a quick discussion or dialogue with you guys, just for clarity, for the voters, for people online, I, wherever you're out there? Because my question is, what is the benefit of the five stories versus the others, the heights that have been impacted throughout the city? What is the benefit to that? And perhaps Mayor Starker, you can speak to that, or maybe Mr. Stites, or perhaps the representative who-- representative who presented. What is the benefit to the five stories as opposed to four or something of that ilk?
We really don't dialogue in this format right now, so it's really your opportunity to comment. We're going to have questions from council, and then the staff may respond later to what they've heard, and there may be some answers in there.
Then allow me to pose questions that perhaps can be discussed amongst yourselves and perhaps raised. As a citizen of Wheat Ridge here, what is the vision down the road? I drive through Arvada, where my family still lives and where I was raised as a boy, and I see 58th Avenue now. Is that the vision for Wheat Ridge going forward? 58th Avenue, if you're not familiar, has been dominated now with a lot of the high-density, very compacted. If they can find a small section of area, they're going to take it, they're going to build as much as they can, get as much, as many people as possible in that small area. My question for your discussion amongst yourselves is, what is the vision? Is that it? Because, I mean, if you take a drive on 58th and Kipling, you'll see a huge building where that Kmart used to be. Is that the vision? So I'd ask you to consider that. Also, I understand that Intermountain Health owns that property, and so I also ask, and maybe can just be raised, is what is the stake for the city in this? What's their interest? Because I understand that the city has no interest in trying to relocate City Hall or any of the city properties to that area. So what is the interest of the city in a private property development? That's my other question. But most of all, I appreciate that you guys would listen to the community. It's very nice. Yes, this is a foregone conclusion that's going to appear on the ballot, and ultimately it's up to the voters. And I just really hope that there is more information provided to the community, especially through the election process, that would give both the pros and the cons to this. And I think if people would understand why that height would be required or necessitated, then they'd be more apt to maybe vote for it or not vote for it. But if a compelling argument could be made on either end, it would be helpful. And so I'd ask that the council and representative would be able to provide that through the entire process leading up to November. But I appreciate your time again, and thank you very much, and look forward to your discussions.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Zaleski, and Mary Fegy on deck. Very good. Then I will call Mary Fegy and Janelle Shaver on deck.
I'm Mary Fegy. I live at 3465 Estes Street, and I've been in Wheat Ridge for 45 years, and I love Wheat Ridge. I think you guys do a fantastic job here. I think you've been doing a really good job of running the city. My concern is, especially when you mentioned that the retail aspect would be limited, I would like to see a little bit more retail and have the living dwellings above the retail. So this way, you have a little bit more of a mixed use rather than having it all residential. Because I have to admit, I was part of the bid board for the downtown area for Arvada when I had a business down there, and I didn't like the giant buildings that were blocking the landscape, that were just adding to mega amounts of congestion, and the amount of traffic running through there is just insane. If you go down to the Tennyson Corridor, you have the mixed use, where you have the retail on the bottom and you have the residential up top. It's much more walkable, it's much more usable. It is definitely, I think it definitely fits the neighborhood much better. And I think our area where we're at is more conducive to where the Tennyson-type look is. And I think we benefit from having it more in that scope than having it in the Arvada scope. So I know it's up to you, and I know it's up to the citizens of Wheat Ridge to decide on the height and the whole bit. And the height thing is not as big of an issue for me as it is the mixed use and the retail and the thing. I'd rather see a little bit more of a whole-use property so we can really get the best benefit out of these, out of this huge property. I mean, I only live one block away, so it's like, so it definitely is going to be vested interest for me as far as what's going to happen. But I think ultimately, it's going to be left to the citizens of Wheat Ridge, but I think it's going to be a good decision if we can narrow down what this is going to mean for the actual, for the going-ahead plan before it's hit to the voters, because then I think you have a better success of it passing. But anyway, thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Our next speaker and final speaker will be Janelle Shaver.
Oops. Good evening. My name is Janelle Shaver. I live at 8890 West 35th Avenue. I live in Wheat Ridge and for a mystery amount of years, won't tell, I'm a native. I wanted to, there are so many things I want to say, but number one, this affects the value of property. And when that happens, usually, it's labeled as quasi judicial. But since there's no application, it can't be quasi judicial. And since it's not quasi judicial, you council people, staff, the city, can use tax money to promote this for the November 5th election. That doesn't seem fair. Intermountain Health bought a property that was zoned hospital. No one in this city asked them to buy it, and no one in this city asked them to move their hospital out on the other side of I-70. But they chose to do that. So now they have a big bunch of property that's zoned for hospital. I'd like to quote a former Wheat Ridge resident who was a state legislator and also our U.S. Representative in Washington, Ed Perlmutter, who comes from a family of developers. And I remember years ago at a land use workshop, when I was on city council down at the Calhoun Municipal League, he said, "It is not the job of government to ensure the highest use of anyone's property." So you have what you have. Good luck with that. Now, if I had a house, I do have a house, if I had a house, I said, "I want to put a little store here, and I'm going to sell it to somebody, and they want to put a store here." Well, the whole area is zoned residential. That wouldn't be appropriate. And the whole surrounding area is single-family, basically. There's a few doubles, but it's mostly single-family. And the other issue I have is that this decision is going to be made by the whole city, but the whole city isn't going to have to bear the burden of this massive project. It's probably going to have, at least just in the central area, 600 units. That's probably 12 to 2,400 cars and how many trips per day. There's also a lot of unanswered questions about who's going to be responsible for repairing the roads and removing the snow in the winter? Is it going to be a homeowners association or something like that? Or is the city going to have to pay that bill? There's probably going to be, have to be stoplights, extra stoplights put in on 32nd and maybe even on another one on 38. Who's going to pay for that? Roads may have to be widened. Who's going to pay for that? Then we don't have the infrastructure to support this massive infusion of people. And the last thing is, as Lauren mentioned, this is a vision for the future. Is your vision for the future high rises? Is that your vision? There are other uses there could be. Since the neighborhood revitalization study, there's been not one effort to increase the agricultural heritage of the city. Why not zone it for estates, people, a quarter of acre or more, that people could have horses when you're so near the Clear Creek Green Belt? There isn't any of that in the area, and that would be great. What do we do with our open space money? It comes every year, more open space money, more open space money, more open space money. This would be a good thing to buy, a park. I saw Councilmember Dozeman, I can't even remember where, and I told her to take her kids down to Dartmouth Park in Englewood. It's a beautiful park. It's got a train in it, a stream that runs through it, and it has one ball field, and we were there this summer for one of my grandson's games, and kids were just playing in the waters like this deep. But kids were playing in it, and right next door is a magnificent water park that's a man-made water park. So there's just, I would just wish you would put your thinking cap on and do something creative and different with this than just, oh, let's throw up some more apartment buildings that everybody's griping about. We just don't have the infrastructure to handle this, and I wish you would do something more creative with it. I guess I better stop. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. That's all of the speakers that I have signed up to speak. So we will close our public speaking on this item and go to questions from council, and I'll start with Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question that is specifically germane to the topic, and then in an attempt to keep us on topic, I just have one clarifying question. So my first question is, can you please, City Manager Goff, can you please explain what the role of the city and city staff is once this is sent to the ballot?
Yes, Councilmember Hoppe. Any time a ballot question, once city council sets that language, which is tonight, if you choose to move forward, city staff cannot spend any time or city money on campaigning for or against it. Council and their individual authority and ability can do that, but not as a body to spend money.
Thank you for that clarification. And then a lot of our comments, and thanks for coming tonight to comment, a lot of our comments, if you go to What's Up Wheat Ridge, so I just want to make sure that it's still on, if you go to What's Up Wheat Ridge, then you can go to the Lutheran Legacy Campus and see all of the work that's been done on it and the discussions. There's also a study session on May 13th that you may want to view, a study session on August 5th that you may want to view. And we'll be taking a first look at potential zoning. When is that going to happen for us?
October 7th. Will be a study session on...
November 7th.
October 7th.
October 7th would be another opportunity. For now, this question is about should we send it to the ballot or not?
Thank you. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for coming and speaking tonight. We always appreciate that. So I am genuinely curious, how much was the property listed for? Is that something you can disclose?
We don't know.
You don't know?
No.
What is, once a developer is under contract for it, what is the role of the city? We're going through, we're going through our rezoning process with it, but we heard a lot tonight around what is the dynamic between density and open space and what's the city's role in terms of translating the master plan that the community is informed and we adopted against our rezoning, and then seeing through that vision that our community is informed around wanting to ensure that it's a vibrant place with a bright of uses, but we also have really consistently heard like the need and desire for open space, which someone, one of the speakers tonight said, you know, like, who are we as a community? And if I were to boil it down to one thing, I would say we are, parks and open space is one of our most, I think, distinct feature, and it would be really a shame to lose that in this project. So if someone could maybe just sort of speak to that, it would be helpful.
Sure. I'll start, and I'll turn it over to Lauren. But yeah, the zoning, as you know, we've had a couple of study sessions on, I believe, and as Lauren mentioned, we'll have another one coming up. But the framework of the zoning basically follows the master plan page for page, basically. So it is going to reflect what we heard from the community, but I'll let Lauren, she's more articulate at that than I am.
Sure. So I think tonight's a good example that throughout the last four years, we've heard a lot of competing interests about what this property should be. It should be open space. It should be more housing options. It should be senior housing. It should retain some of the medical uses. We shouldn't cannibalize the commercial work happening at 38th and Kipling. We should have cultural facilities. We should have civic facilities. It's a 100-acre site. It is six blocks tall and five blocks wide. It is a neighborhood on its own, or could be. And because of its size and because we have the ability to create zoning rules, we can have something in there for everyone. And so that is kind of what the master plan did, and what the zoning will do, will allow all of those things in the appropriate scales and the appropriate location. So the middle neighborhood, the middle of the site, couldn't accommodate taller buildings. The peripheral neighborhoods, butting up against our existing neighborhoods, would have lower heights, lower densities, and open space throughout is what we heard from the community. And the rules that we can write in the zoning are what can manifest that vision. I think you heard tonight, and it's something that we're working on now, is that Wheat Ridge is a place of places, and how do you get new things that can coexist and complement existing neighborhoods and things? And so those are the rules that we're writing now to try to achieve exactly that.
Great. Thank you. And then we heard from a speaker tonight asking, what is the likelihood of mixed-use buildings to come in as opposed to just like dedicated standalone commercials? So granted, we are not through that rezoning process, but what does that look like in the context of the master plan that we have adopted, and what's the likelihood of that landing somewhere at the end of the zoning process?
Sure. The master plan calls for a mix of uses, and that could be buildings next to each other, or it could be vertical mixed use. And to that end, because it's often driven by the market and construction costs, the zoning would allow either of those scenarios likely in the middle of the campus where the neighborhood is a little bit more, the new neighborhood to be, would be more mixed use. So either could be possible.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can staff provide an update around the discussion of potentially moving City Hall and if that's still feasible and of interest?
Sure. Thank you for that question. Yes, we've been for some time with council and the public, and it came out in the master plan, there's been discussion about civic uses on the campus, and one of those civic uses would be potentially, could be, new City Hall or other city uses, and also other civic uses that, you know, you see in a community, libraries, cultural centers, theaters, different things like that, educational institutions. So that's all allowed. And as you know, we did a facilities assessment of all of our city facilities. It was determined that we're kind of out of space, and our potential growth, we're going to be out of space even more. So we're looking for additional space, and the direction from council was to seriously look at the Lutheran campus as a potential partner for a tenant of somewhere on that
Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I understand this question is a bit off our topic this evening, but recently I was asked by a constituent to ask what sort of assurance that the community would have that the two historic buildings, the Chapel and the Blue House, will remain.
Yes, so again, that was very clear in what we heard from the community, and it's in the master plan, and city council did pass a resolution a couple of years ago now to ensure that any future owner does everything they can to preserve and reuse those assets. Lauren and I have been meeting with potential new owners of the site for some time now, and we've communicated that with every one of them, and they all got it.
Additional questions from council before I close the public hearing and ask for motion on this item? Are there questions that you want to raise? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mayor Protem Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 14-2024 in ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 5th, 2024 special municipal election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter related to building height at the former Lutheran Hospital campus on second reading or republished and takes effect immediately.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Is there discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all to those that came and spoke tonight. You know, I think that this is a really important aspect of the democratic process for you to come and have your voices heard, and as we've referred to several times this evening, there was a master plan that had a robust public input process, and this is directly related to the concepts that came from that master plan, and I think the best way to handle this situation is to refer it to the ballot and allow the people to have their voices heard, and I think this is the best-case scenario of doing development right on the Lutheran Legacy Campus, and I know it's a large infill development in our community, and I think that, you know, there's going to be apprehensions, and validly so, and I just really encourage and hope that all of you will stay engaged and involved, and continue to talk to your neighbors, continue to talk to us, to ensure that we get this right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I've had a lot of discussions with my constituents, and I've assured them that, you know, there's going to be ongoing discussions, and we want a lot of thoughtful conversations, and we encourage everybody to keep speaking, we want to listen to you, and I also want everybody to understand that the staff has put in a lot of effort to really carefully look at, you know, what this property is and potential, and not trying to rush through it, and so I'm really thankful to staff for all their efforts that they definitely, you know, come this far. That master plan was done in 2021, and I encourage anybody who's not aware of that to, you know, take a look at What's Up Wheat Ridge, and take a look at the campus plan, you know, read the appendix, that's where it kind of gives some really good media information about, you know, what can we really support as far as retail and office, and I thought that was very interesting, and I won't, I won't opine on that, I'm going to let everybody just read that and kind of, you know, ask questions, make your own decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to echo a little bit more of what Councilwoman Dozeman and Ohm have already said, and I would really super encourage everyone to come to that study session that's coming up. No zoning has been set yet, we also need to know if we can, you know, build the five stories, which is why this has to go to the ballot, and engage in that conversation when it comes around zoning.
Thank you. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you. Wanting to, as much as I can keep this focused, the question at hand, which is whether supporting moving it to the ballot, I echo others tonight that this is the exact right next step, and this is the right dialogue for this. There has been extensive outreach, has been iterated tonight, both in informing the Lutheran Legacy Campus master plan, and we were asked a couple of times, like, what's the vision? Well, the vision is in that document and is community-informed, and I think, you know, as soon as we cast a vote here tonight, the rules change a little bit in terms of who can say what and spend money, and I think it's incumbent on all of us to convey information honestly, and to make sure that what we're saying is something that can be verified, and if we're making claims about, you know, our interpretation versus what it actually is, we're doing a disservice to our whole community. So there will be campaigns, but we also know we have community partners who are going to be great neutral partners to convey information, there's a lot of referenceable information, so many of us in this room are leaders in this space, and we talk to our neighbors, and we have different platforms, and we're all entitled to our opinions, but as community leaders, we need to hold ourselves to a standard of conveying accurate information so that this democratic process of referring something as important as this to the ballot is not informed by passionate disinformation, but rather persuasive opinions about what the actual information is on the site. And so I'm just, I'm going to ask that of all of us up here on the dais, and those who are listening that we hold ourselves to that standard, because that is at the core of democracy, and we on this dais have reaffirmed our commitment to democracy multiple times, and that continues. I do, what was my other point? My other point, oh, the one thing I do want to just address is that, you know, we heard both requests to not use, you know, threatening scary language about like, if you don't do it this high, you're not going to get this, and then we also heard, well, give us the reasons why you'd have to do height, and that's actually what it is, is that like the truth of land use with competing interests and not enough space, and some uncertainty on what it's going to be, is that there are inherent trade-offs, that is just the nature of this, and so where those trade-offs land will be referred to the voters of our community, it's not, we're not making up like artificial constraints, there's only so much land, there's a seller who wants to maximize their ability to make money off of it, there was a question about who profits tonight, and, you know, at the end of the day, everybody hopefully profits if we get this right, our city benefits from our vibrant multi-use campus that brings in new residents and new businesses and vibrancy to what is now like predominantly a vacant lot, and now is a super vacant lot, empty hospital, but, you know, we aren't making up artificial scary tactics. The reason that this is going to the voters is that we heard from the voters that one of the things they really want is open space, and the nature of the market for us to get most of what we want is to be able to allow a little bit of density in other places. So that is, that is not something we're making up to try and get something we want, it's the nature of the market, and so the voters get to decide which side of that we fall on. So I am enthusiastically supporting moving this to the ballot, and just one last time, we'll request all of us use verifiable information, we can be persuasive with our opinions as long as we're expressing them as opinions, luckily the city and other partners will have great reference information, and please use that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Stites.
I was just about to say just about everything that Councilor Holtein did, so I'm just going to say ditto, she said it better than I would, and I'm voting for this. Thank you.
Very judicious. Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also really appreciate what's been said by my other counselors, and I really appreciate everyone coming in tonight. I do want to emphasize the discussion around making it not one thing or the other, as Director McIlak talked about, there are several different areas to this plan that allow for everything that was talked about, and when we talk about those five stories, it's in a very specific place, not at the edge, and so it's been a really thoughtful conversation about where to put that higher density, and so I really encourage you, when you're talking with your neighbors, when you're talking amongst each other, go to that site, look at the plan, because some of us are going to agree, some of us are going to disagree, that's why I'm supporting it going to the ballot, but it's a very, you know, we rarely get everything we want, as I don't think I need to tell anyone in here in a decision like this, but the plan that has been put out there offers a lot of what most people want some of, and so in my mind, it's a really great, of the question we have to ask, it's a good question. Sorry, I write a lot of tests for a living in what I do in my day job, and there are good questions, and there are bad questions, and I think this ballot question is really thoughtful and explains a good community's discussion around what we want that space to look like, so I really encourage everything that has been said by my co-counselors, and thank everybody for coming in. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number Three. Councilor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 15-2024, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 5th, 2024 special municipal election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to eliminate redundant references, conform to current statutory and case law, and make other non-substantive, you know what I'm saying, revisions.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading, it is not quasi-judicial, it is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, we have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll let our attorney, Mr. Dahl, provide some more context to the side of it.
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you very much, and I have trouble all the time with non-substantive, it's, you have to like think about it, and then say it, so we put you on the spot. Thank you very much, as you heard from the summary, these are non-substantive changes. The charter was adopted in 1978, as the staff report indicates, has been amended a number of times since then, most recently in 2009. In between, however, there have been a couple of major changes that have resulted in leftovers and odd things in the charter. As council will know, originally, it was not a council manager form of government, that got changed in the late 90s, and as a result, there are a number of provisions that had to do with kind of the transition to that, that are still reflected in the charter, no longer necessary. There were transitional provisions actually in 1978, saying existing offices continue. Well, they've been continuing since 1978, we don't have to keep saying it in the charter. As well, council will recall that there was a time when all offices were up for election every two years, mayor, the clerk, treasurer, and all the council members, that got changed to the two, two four-year terms overlapping, staggered, and at the time, there was, it was necessary to write a really complex set of transitional sections to deal with council members that were in office at the time, and because it was three terms if you're two years, two terms if you're four, but how do you deal with people that are halfway through their first or second two-year term? And there's a lot of math that was involved in trying to figure that out, and that resulted in these long transitional, if the following council, the council members in these seats get to, we don't need that anymore, that's now a long time in the past, so those are examples of some transitional provisions that are no longer necessary. As well, you'll see there are some gender references in the charter that we've completely eliminated and made it gender-neutral as well as we could, and I think it was, it's, it really advances the charter into today's date, as it should. And lastly, there have been changes required really by the courts and by the state legislature, and they're detailed in here, I certainly answer any questions on them, but those I would say are sort of three major categories of the kind of cleanup that I think the charter really will need and can use, and if it's done and approved by the voters, we'll have a much cleaner document going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. But no substantive changes?
No substantive changes, only non-substantive ones, if you can follow that.
I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this item, so I will go to questions from council of staff on this item. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is the, on second reading, so we are ready to move on this one here, because this is a document that is guaranteed to put you to sleep if you read it in the evening, but it is, it's an important document, it's our city charter, and I would urge people to, if you can stay awake, to read it, because it not only provides you an update into how language has changed, and the important changes that language will have on our city, but my question, I guess, is a long way around, is will this ballot item and the previous item be represented in what we think of as the Blue Book?
Yes, I mean, the Blue Book will be something that the, you know, the, it's not a Tabor question, so we won't have those pro-con statements, but the, when the Blue Book gets published, for all the questions in the county, there will likely be a summary, we don't prepare that, so that's done, I think, in the office of the county clerk and recorder, I think, maybe the secretary of state. With both questions, they're lengthy enough, I think, that the persons doing the summary will probably just default to the question itself, we don't really have any control over that, and I'm hoping that they do a good job, but, so it will be in the Blue Book, but I don't anticipate there will be a longer explanation than the questions themselves. We'll have to see.
Okay, and just to follow that, then, if somebody's interested in actually comparing or looking at what's redlined, where will they find that?
In two places. The resolution you passed earlier tonight has as an exhibit to that resolution, the red line of the charter that shows all the changes, and that same red line of the charter, and it runs to what, 38 pages or something like that? Yes, 38 pages, yes, is also an attachment as an exhibit to this ordinance, so when those, when the ordinances are published or posted, the postings on the website, go on the website, look for ordinance number, it'd be ordinance number 1800, ordinance number 1800, series 2024, go to that ordinance, and that will have the entire 38-page charter showing the red line changes.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, and actually, Councilor Larson, if this, if this does sort of put you to sleep, you might want to consider it over several evenings. Okay, Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Manager Goff, would there be a possibility to have a quick link to the redline version on the city website?
Yeah, we'll find a place on the city clerk's portion of the website that has ballot information on it.
Thank you.
Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dahl, would you mind just clarifying citizenship neutrality, and when that's a case and when it's not? I've had a couple of questions from constituents, and explained that if one is an elected official, citizenship is required, whereas if it's certain committees, it's not, and that's what I am, I am understanding that I am reading in this. If not, I just wanted us to clarify...
Sure.
...what citizenship neutrality meant for this document.
Yeah, it's a little different. There was a lot of references to a citizen in the document. We changed most of those to resident.
Gotcha, thank you.
That makes sense.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with...
Correct.
Citizenship status.
Requirement, no.
Has to do with the wording. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Are there any further questions of council before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilor Snell, may I have a motion on the side?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 15-2024, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 2024 special municipal election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to eliminate redundant references, conform to current statutory and case law, and make other non-substantive revisions on second reading, order it published, and that it take effect immediately.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to also make a clarification around the gender neutrality. We went in there and changed things that it would say, the mayor shall XYZ, he shall XYZ, which is kind of a lazy language way shortcut to do that, so those changes got changed to the mayor shall XYZ, the mayor shall XYZ, or the council person, or the elected official, so just so everybody's clear on where we made those changes.
No discussion, further discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Four. Councilwoman Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 16-2024, an ordinance amending Article 5 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the city's landscaping requirements and making conforming amendments therewith. Ad issued to proposed ordinance makes necessary updates to the city's zoning and development code to modernize, clarify, and update landscape design requirements. This repeal and reenactment of the ordinance updates standards to address more water fishing design, and it reorganizes and clarifies code to make requirements easier to understand by all users.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading, it is not quasi-judicial, it is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing. And, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Lauren McIlak will introduce this item. Thank you.
You're welcome, McIlak.
Thank you. So we have been working on this for just over a year, we started on this topic in June of last year, and we're really excited to be at what feels like a finish line here. This adoption would be the first substantive update of our landscape regulations in over 20 years, and it would align our code with recent state law and really best practice. I think the good thing about a slightly prolonged code amendment is that the world evolved... I think the good thing about a slightly prolonged code amendment is that the world evolves around you. And throughout this project, what we've been seeing is that the market is really already moving towards water-wise practices. Big property owners, small property owners, businesses, homeowners, they're all seeking to save water, save money on their water bills. In the last month or two in the home stretch here, we have looked at the proposed developments. We're actively reviewing, so the landscape plans that we have in the process. And we have been very pleasantly surprised to see that, for the most part, those projects in the pipeline already comply with this code if it were to be adopted. So a few small tweaks on the margins, but it's really testament, again, to how market-based we think this code amendment is. As you know, the state law has also moved in the same direction, limiting turf in certain applications. At the end of the day, the vast majority of this code really applies to new development or new landscaping. There's nothing required of existing properties. This process has given us the chance to update our resources and, and be a resource to anybody who wants to make a change voluntarily on their site. I am not the expert on this topic, so I will not be helping anybody in that arena. But Janet Gassman is our landscape planner, and she's been taking the lead. Because this has been a little bit of a prolonged process, Janet is going to remind us of where we landed on some of those key topics. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you covered it all. Just kidding. I wish. For the record, I'm Janet Gassman. I'm the landscape planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and I will be walking you through the proposed landscape ordinance. As most of you know, changes to the city's landscape code were discussed at the city council study sessions in June of 2023 and February of 2024. And we are so happy to be back with the revised code document for your review and approval. At study sessions, we focused a lot on the current code, so tonight, we will be taking a forward-thinking approach and focus on the new. As Lauren mentioned, much of the existing landscape code has remained the same since 1979, with one major revision in 2001. Some requirements were outdated, and some others are hard to decipher due to formatting issues. Also, water concerns and local area growth have contributed to a heightened interest in water-saving landscape design. It's reported that outdoor water use comprises roughly 60% of residential water consumption and as much as 80 or 90% of total water use when you include commercial and agricultural uses. So with this hope, with this update, we hope to actively reduce water consumption, encourage water efficiency, and establish stronger links between the water supply, land use planning, and site design. So a little background, water-wise landscaping is similar to xeriscaping, if you've heard that term, in that it encourages the use of native and low-water or xeric plants. But it also focuses on wise water use no matter where the site is located, not just in arid environments. It emphasizes grouping plants by water requirements to encourage efficient irrigation design and is functional, attractive, and easily maintained in its natural surroundings. The proposed code modernizes, clarifies, and updates the design standards and requirements. It promotes principles of water-wise landscaping. It aligns with the city's Sustainable Wheat Ridge Action Plan. It reflects the recently adopted Senate Bill 24005, which addresses water-related landscaping practices. And it focuses on new multi-unit residential and non-residential in particular, but also expands and clarifies requirements for low-density uses, residential uses. As a refresher, in our previous two study sessions, we focused our discussion on the nine key topic areas shown here. Tonight, we will look at how the proposed code amendment addresses each of these areas. And I brought pictures. Topic area one is irrigation. Proposed code maintains the current requirements for an automatic irrigation system for all new development and integrates water-wise best practices. In addition, it allows for temporary irrigation of native grass and wildflower areas. It clarifies the needs for trees to remain irrigated, even if adjacent areas of the landscape are more xeric in design. And it includes the ability to waive a permanent irrigation for new low-density residential development and water-wise renovation of older sites. These may or may not have irrigation systems on site and may require the submittal of a revised plan and manual watering schedule. Shown in this picture is an area of native grasses with temporary irrigation at the north end of the Clear Creek Crossing development. Topic area two is artificial turf. The proposed code updates and codifies the artificial turf policy, which currently applies only to mixed-use development and non-residential development. It allows limited application in low-density residential uses, multi-unit residential, and non-residential uses. And it aligns with the previously mentioned Senate Bill 24005, which became effective on August 7th, which limits artificial turf, turf to athletic purposes on new non-residential sites. Only residential development is exempt from the bill's requirements. These are examples of artificial turf installed in the common areas of Clear Creek Crossing Apartments, also are previously known as Outlook 2. Topic three includes irrigated, functional, and non-functional turf. And this topic covers a lot of ground. First, it is, it was important for us to define each of these as they are becoming commonly used terms when discussing water-wise landscaping and new construction. We will look at each of these in more detail in the next several slides. Irrigated turf is just that. It's sodded or seeded grass areas served by a functioning automated, automatic irrigation system. For new low-density residential uses, the proposed code contains a 50% irrigated turf maximum, shown for, shown our examples of existing low-density irrigated turf in our The proposed code lowers the limit on irrigated turf for new multi-unit residential from 60% to 30%, in line with current non-residential limits. Recent development projects have been coming in at these or lower levels to reduce outdoor water use, and some have come in with irrigated turf levels as low as 10% of the total landscape. Shown are the smaller irrigated turf areas typical of a new development. These are at Yarrow Garden, a townhome in the center of the city. Irrigated turf for new non-resident, residential sites, there's no change proposed. The code maintains the 30% limit, shown as irrigated turf at International Paper, north of I-70. Current code does not address functional and non-functional turf, as these are newer terms in the planning and landscape environment. Functional turf is turf that is located in a recreational use area or other space that is regularly used for civic, community, or recreational purposes, which may include playgrounds, sports fields, picnic grounds, amphitheaters, portions of parks, putting greens, and the playing areas of golf courses. Pictured here are functional turf areas at Kipling Village on the left and Clear Creek Crossing Apartments, specifically in the dog exercise area. Non-functional turf, on the other hand, is turf that is predominantly ornamental and not functional, such as that located in a street right-of-way parking lot and mediums. The proposed code limits the use of non-functional turf in new multi-unit residential and non-residential developments, not low-density residential. And it aligns with that Senate Bill 24005. Shown here are areas of existing non-functional turf at Applewood Shopping Center that would be prohibited in new development under the proposed code and under the Senate Bill 24005. These two photos illustrate attractive alternatives to non-functional turf in recently approved and installed developments. Picture on the left is at the entrance to the new Lutheran Hospital campus, and on the right, in a landscape island at International Paper, north of I-70. Topic area, area four covers landscape specifications. New code updates and clarifies plant and mulch specifications to better align with water-wise principles and with best practices. It adds a minimum size for perennials and grasses. Previously, those had just been grouped in with shrubs, requiring a five-gallon pot, and perennials and grasses are now specified at one gallon. It reduces the minimum size for vines and ground covers to quart pots, and expands and clarifies specifications for organic and inorganic mulches such as bark, cobble, and crushed stone. And it's, and it provides a perennial to shrub equivalent, as in three perennials to one shrub, which we did not have included previously, for meeting required plant quantities. Topic area five covers low-density residential requirements. We are not requiring current homeowners to change anything. But as we move into this new water-conscious era, we're getting a lot of questions to provide basic guidelines and parameters for new and significantly modified sites. In order to maintain a balanced landscape, the proposed code defines front yard landscaping requirements for new single-unit and duplex residential sites. It provides guidance and limitations on the use of organic and inorganic mulches, native grasses, and wildflowers. It requires a minimum one-third live plant coverage in new front yards, and clarifies renovation requirements for transitioning to a more xeric or water-wise landscaping, such as requiring that rock, stone, or wildflower areas be an intentional part of the overall design and balanced with live plantings. Excuse me. We're not changing the rules for existing homes. Rather, we're here to be a resource. Greater detail will be provided via the proposed landscape design guidebook and handouts for specific uses. And I'm already getting calls for that guidebook from, from the community. Topic area six covers non-living landscape materials. The proposed code separates maximums by use, such as residential versus commercial uses. It increases the non-living maximum for new multi-unit residential and non-residential sites, and allows non-living material to count toward landscaping requirements when integrated into the overall design. These show, these photos include a public space with seating wall at Clear Creek Crossing Apartments and the Clear Creek Terrace Townhome Development. Topic area seven covers xeric and water-wise design. The proposed code separates design requirements by use also. For new low-density residential development, water-wise plant material and principles are encouraged. But for new multi-unit residential and non-residential development, water-wise plant material and principles are required, along with a hydrozone plan and water budget. A hydrozone plan and water budget encourages the grouping of plants by water use, such as water-conserving plants, non-water-conserving, generally turf, and non-irrigated, which is like pavement and patios. Upon approval of the revised landscape code, we will work to, work will begin on the landscape design guidebook, which will provide water-wise design recommendations and resources for all use types, including district-specific requirements, preferred plant lists, and suggestions for reducing water consumption in the landscape. Almost there. Topic eight covers modifications to the streetscape design manual. With the approval of the revised code, staff will update the manual to more fully reflect the move toward water-wise design. This will include a much expanded list of approved plants for use in the streetscape and throughout the city, and information on prohibited and noxious plants, organic and inorganic mulches, alternatives to turf in the land, in the streetscape, and other reference materials. With the manual, while the manual applies specifically to the streets, streetscape, we use this document to guide development throughout the city. And lastly, our final topic is maintenance. The proposed code expands required maintenance practices to include structures, surface materials, and irrigation systems, and clarifies, oops, sorry. Thank you, somebody. And clarifies when an amendment to a previously approved plan may be necessary to record changes or renovations to the landscape. Of course, when changes to one area of the code, changes to one area of the code most often require changes to other areas of code, and in this case, many other areas of code. The conforming amendments related to this code revision align other sections of code with the newly revised landscape code, reflect current practice, and serve to consolidate, centralize, and defer to Section 26502, the landscape section. At the end of the day, it is our hope that the revisions to the code make understanding and enforcement of the code easier for all users, including planning staff, developers, homeowners, and the community service officers. There you go. And that completes our summary of the proposed code, and we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gassman. Appreciate your presentation. I have no one from the public signed up to speak on, on this, so I will go to questions from council and start with Councilor Weaver.
Great. Thank you so much. This was really comprehensive, and I really enjoyed reading it. I, I meant that seriously. Compared to his, no, I'm teasing. I, I do have a couple comments. I'm concerned, and I realize you can tell me this is off-topic. So in a lot of the pictures that you showed, of course, we have a tree requirement in building. But I think we've all seen what has happened in past years, is that oftentimes, small trees are put in, they're landscaping trees, they're not meant to actually get to the large trees that we all love about tree canopy. And, and tree canopy trees take a commitment, right? And they have to be watered pretty seriously. And now that we are not getting the rain that we used to, I'm even watering some of my tree canopy trees because, because we're in a changing climate. Does this, will this address anything about trees? I'm, I'm just concerned that in a lot of the pictures of the new developments, there were very small trees, and they were all landscaping trees. And I call landscaping trees a tree that's not meant to grow above 15, 20 feet, and it's probably going to be removed in, within the time that the building is in existence. And so I, I just, I'm wondering if it should consider a section about, because we've said in other conversations up on the dais that we are committed to a tree canopy, which means being committed to trees that are 50 to 100 years old, if we want those big, beautiful trees that we have when we drive down some of our great corridors. So I'm just, I, I am not opposing anything, I'm just sort of asking the question of council, do you think maybe we should think about including this? My second thing is, having lived in Denver for 10 years before I moved out here, I called the City of Denver because I wanted to put a green roof. I was on a fourth of an acre, and I wanted to put a green roof on a garage I was building. And of course, they lobbed me to landscape, then they lobbed me back to permitting, and then, and basically, they said, no, you can't do that because we don't have any rules around it. And I think there's a point at which you're going to see Wheat Ridge residents asking those questions of, well, if I create a green roof, does that count as my landscaping? You know, how does this, this play in to the whole conversation? So again, I don't feel like we need it right now. I just think it should be on the radar that that is something that, especially with flat roofs coming back into style, that that's something that, that people are going to be thinking about. Thanks. This is great.
Any further questions? Councilor Ohm?
Yeah, I just have, I just have one. So to clarify, is there specifically a deciduous canopy tree requirement?
Well, the requirements are for, like, shade trees. Well, the requirements are for, like, shade trees. And that's what's intended when we say a shade tree. Ornamental trees are allowed, but generally, we're looking for shade trees when we're talking about roadway plantings, interior parking lot plantings. Generally, we only see the ornamentals show up in buildings, you know, surrounding the buildings, and maybe in some open spaces, so.
Yeah, so shade trees are specifically required as meeting the tree requirement on a low-density, so where there's enough yard space usually to allow that canopy to blossom in a multi-unit or non-residential. We're not that specific in terms of requiring a shade canopy tree, mostly because the lot coverage and conflicting location with a tree in the building are going to create an issue. So the code has always required that it be a shade tree, just one tree per 70 feet of lot width for single unit and duplex, and that remains in the code.
Councilor Weaver.
Then I just want to take issue with that for a second, because even along 38th, with the new developments that are there, there is never enough space. I understand that those are oak trees, and they're Sorry, I'm not going to call out a particular place, but there is not enough space for a shade tree to grow for the next 50 years, because they're set within three feet of the street. And so while I appreciate that we're requiring a shade tree, I just think if we want to achieve tree canopy, which is what we have now, which I realize are big trees relatively close to the street, we're going to have to think about moving shade trees back and watering them. Because what's happening is, those shade trees are going in, they can only live until they're 20 years old anyway, because they don't have the space to grow underneath the street, and they're not getting watered, and they're just replaced. And that's fine if we want to just be in that replacement phase. I'm not making the argument that we should be anywhere. I'm just saying, if we want the city to look like it does when we drive down some of our corridors, then we have to commit to thinking about how trees are planted and how much water we devote to those trees. And they can exist I lived for a long time in Austin, Texas. They can exist along with these water-wise plantings, but you have to commit and have a sort of separate rule around the watering and the tree and the tree maintenance as a different concept, as part of landscape. That's all I would like to say to my colleagues. Thank you.
Would council be okay if we brought back a bigger discussion about tree canopy in Wheat Ridge? I've been thinking about this for a long time myself. I mean, we're so proud of our tree, being a tree city, right? But I don't think we've had a comprehensive discussion about
Yeah, thank you for saying that. Because I just, this plan, while great
Yeah.
What we're putting in is not going to get us to tree
That bigger
Yeah, thank you.
We'll put that on a future.
Are there any further questions of staff before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Are there? Nope? Okay. I am going to close the public hearing. And Councilor Ohm, may I have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 16-2024, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article 5 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning landscape requirements and making conforming amendments therewith on second reading, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Council Weaver as their discussion on the motion. Council Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. After much consideration, I've decided that I cannot support Council Bill Number 16-2024, which replaces the entirety of City Code Section 26-502 with new language defining the requirements for design, installation, and maintenance of landscapes that recognize water-conserving principles. Although there is much in the bill that does strengthen and clarify the general design principles of Section 26-502, the emphasis on non-traditional landscape themes, combined with a devaluation of grass lawns, reflects a policy that is short-sighted and will have little impact on water usage in Wheat Ridge. Basic municipal economics tell us that residential, commercial, and public water users can be incentivized to reduce water use by a tiered pricing structure that penalizes excessive water use while encouraging responsible landscape watering practices. And despite the lofty goals of the Sustainable Action Plan, so long as the city does not have real influence on water sourcing, distribution, operations, and price, it will never have a real impact on residential and commercial water usage. It is true that land use and development are directly connected to water use, but without that influence, the city cannot affect real water conservation. As stated in the council bill, the intent of water-wise landscaping is designed is to establish stronger links between water supply and land use planning, but placing a maximum limit on how much grass lawn can surround a new home, for example, will have little, if any, effect on water use. To be sure, policies that encourage greater water efficiency in water usage for house and gardens will provide benefits to both the water user and the community. However, prohibiting grass turf along public sidewalks will only degrade the visual appeal of our public spaces without providing any real impact on community water usage. Finally, let's not overlook the fact that grass lawns are an effective heat sink on hot summer days. Reducing the amount of grass turf adorning our public spaces will only serve to increase the heat-eyeling effect that we all feel during the summer months. Research shows that on a hot summer day, grass lawns are typically 30 degrees cooler than asphalt, 14 degrees cooler than bare soil, and in fall, 35 degrees cooler than artificial turf. Aside from being visibly soothing, grass lawns also reduce energy demand by helping to lower the ambient temperature around a home or building. As the city moves to implement this bill, I urge city staff to provide residents and developers alike with positive and realistic information materials describing how landscaping can be water-efficient, but also practical, long-lasting, and aesthetically pleasing.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I just want to say a big thank you to staff and city council members. Water conservation is very important to me. I deal with this every day. When I first moved to Colorado, I'd come from Las Vegas, Nevada, and I'd watched how that four inches of water they got every year, you know, just they're having a tough time with it, and so they had moratoriums on turf. And to be honest, when I moved to Colorado, I was pretty disappointed at, you know, we only got 15 inches of water a year, yet everybody was turning their lawns like we lived in Florida, watching the water run down the gutters, and just, you know, there was nothing in check. And I was really surprised, and I knew that, you know, I could do better as a, you know, city council person to bring this forward. I have many constituents ask me, what can I do to conserve water? I've seen cities like Severance, Colorado, where they've stopped issuing building permits because they run out of water. I don't want that to happen to our city. I feel like every drop does make a difference, and these are very thoughtful reductions in water, educating our public on what type of turf. I know that our, you know, Parks Director, they've made some thoughtful, you know, plots of converting some of the water waste in Kentucky bluegrass that is not native here, and converting that to something that has deeper roots and can take that heat. Even with the Japanese beetles, you can see the damage that it does to our Kentucky bluegrass lawns. It just eats the roots. It looks awful. I've gone through, you know, any of us can walk through any of the older establishments of having these streetscapes that have the grass, and it's brown. It's dyed out, it's compacted, it just isn't working anymore, you know, so it's not doing anything for a heat effect. And then when I do see the water in these small strips, you know, the water's just, I was just on my bike the other day, I won't name the location, but just watching a river of water run down the gutters, and I thought, is that the best use of our potable water? Just have it run down the gutters into the sewers? And I would argue, no, it's not. We can do so much better by, you know, changing the type of grass, using efficient type of irrigation, and, you know, reading that letter that John Ensaminger of the Southern Veta Water Authority wrote to the Secretary of the Interior, pleading that every water user, you know, upstream of Las Vegas needs to be a part of this effort to conserve water everywhere. And we're now seeing the state is getting on board, too. And so I, you know, I had expectations from staff that, yes, we would have something that would be water-conserving. What I got was, hey, let's have a thorough, comprehensive look at everything. Let's look at the types of mulches. Let's look at the type of turf. It's a lot more, and it was really needed. You guys have raised the bar of what that code used to be for landscape. I'm really proud of that. I've also seen my neighbor that, across the street from me, that has the, you know, hey, I have well water, you know? And a lot of people I know that have wells think that it's the magic straw, but the never-ending supply. A couple of years ago, her well died. The reason it died is because it was hitting sand. That water source is dwindling fast, and so I helped her figure that scenario out, and we ended up, I told her that you need to put in some type of sand filter. And it's, I don't think that's going to be a long-term fix, to be honest. It's just, we're drawing down, drawing down, drawing down, and I see more and more sand, you know, all over her backyard, and I can see that writing on the wall, and it's, you know, we have to be more thoughtful with our turf conversion. And so I am really impressed that, you know, proud of our city, where we're at now, and I've talked to many other, you know, city council people and mayors, and I tell them, like, what are you doing for water conservation in your city? This is really important for the state. We all got to move together, so thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. My long-winded congrats to the staff, and thank you, city council.
Thank you. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you. I also want to thank staff. This was just like such a great presentation, because it was, like, told us what it was, but they actually have the visuals. Because at the end of the day, what we're talking about is like a huge aesthetic impact on our community, and it's something that, you know, whether you're in this room discussing it, or you're just going from your house to the grocery store, you know, the aesthetic quality of our community is important. And what I saw pretty consistently was stuff that looks pretty good. And I just want to address, water conservation is also really important to me. I feel like, you know, the biggest battles ahead of us could be over water and water access, and especially here in the West. And I hear again and again from my constituents, and as, you know, as the council representative on sustainable Wheat Ridge, water conservation is at the forefront of a lot of our constituents. So a lot of them are voluntarily going to want to do what they can, but they're going to want to see that the city cares as well, and that we're asking new people who are coming in and building the aesthetic quality are also demonstrating the values that we have around resource conservation. When I moved in, my house is on a corner, and it's about a half acre, and I had six sprinkler zones when I moved in. And a couple of years after I moved in, I took out most of the front lawn, and I put in a circular drive, and I'm now down to two sprinkler zones, and my water bill was slashed by more than a third. So lawn, you know, lawn and turf conversion does actually save water. I mean, that's, I've experienced it at my house, and one of, you know, and I love having lawn in my backyard. I mean, I will always have that. I've got a dog, we've had kids, like, there's, you know, there's a niceness to having a lawn as well. And it is cooler because it is evaporating water that it's retaining. So that cooling evaporative effect that we experience and benefit from on the grass is because the grass is taking up water and then putting it back out and evaporating it. So I think this was a really thoughtful balance. It's not as austere as some of our surrounding communities. I think we did a good thoughtful job when we had this at study session, thinking through what is that balance between where we are and where we want to be. And I just want to thank my peers and staff, and I think that this is something that our community is going to really embrace, because, you know, resource conservation is definitely one of our core values here in this city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Seven ayes, one nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Five. Councilor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
This is Council Bill Number 17-2024, an ordinance amending Sections 2, 11, and 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws regarding short-term rental district caps, reporting requirements for hosting platforms, and enforcement procedures for same. At issue, in February 2021, City Council enacted legislation concerning the licensing and enforcement of short-term rentals, also known as STRs. Since that time, staff has worked to implement the legislation licensing STRs, collecting the applicable lodgers tax, enforcing the codified regulations. Through the implementation of the program, members of council and staff both identified necessary amendments to the code to improve the STR program. This ordinance amends the code based on that direction received from City Council on June 3, 2024.
Thank you. This will be an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Ally Schecker, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Ms.
Deputy Manager Sche
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Just a quick reminder of how we got here. We met in study session on June 3, and in that working session, staff presented recommendations to align and better strengthen code, and you gave us consensus to return with an ordinance. So we have that for you tonight. The ordinance does the following. It closes the townhome loophole that Council Ohm identified, so that townhomes and mixed-use neighborhoods own districts are included in the district cap. It places requirements on marketplace facilitators that, Mr. Dahl and I were just talking about this tonight, we and every other city, I think, are struggling with. This requires hosts, it requires that the marketplace facilitators require hosts post their STR license number and listings, requires hosts to identify the listing as either whole home or partial home licenses, and that will help us with compliance efforts. The marketplace facilitators, so Airbnb, VRBO, those kinds of places, those sites, need to keep records of transactions that are to be produced upon request, and the code also enables a per-day penalty of $1,000 per violation to the marketplace facilitator should they not comply. The ordinance also revises the cap calculation period to align with the calendar year and with the publishing deadline of January 31 each year, and it aligns the definition of host of Chapter 26 with Chapter 11. So since we last met on this topic back in June, we've been working with Mr. Dahl's office to draft this ordinance. The elements related to Chapter 26 were presented to the Planning Commission. You all had more specific direction for staff related to fines, and I'll be back to speak about that under Item Number Eight, as that's not actually included in the ordinance. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this item, so I'll go to questions of council. Do you have any questions of council, from council, of staff, before I close the public hearing? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilor Larson, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 17-2024, an ordinance amending Sections 2, 11, and 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws regarding short-term rental district caps, reporting requirements for hosting platforms, and enforcement procedures for same. On second reading, order it published and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
We have a motion and a second by Council Ohm. Is there discussion on the motion? Council Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say to staff, a big thank you. You always go beyond my expectations. I kind of thought this is going to be more, you know, at the start, just, you know, let's address the loophole, and, you know, seize the opportunity to, let's take a look and see if there's anything we can, you know, make better. And you've done that. I'm really happy of where we ended up with this, and so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number Six. Councilor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill 18-2024, an ordinance authorizing issuance by the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, of its sales and use tax revenue refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2024, and providing other details in connection therewith. At issue, at the regular general election held on November 7, 2023, the electorate of the city approved ballot question 2J, which extended the one-half of 1% sales and use tax levied by the city, and authorized the issuance of debt to finance city investment and capital improvement projects. Sales and use tax revenue bonds will be issued to finance the city investments, which requires approval of an ordinance by City Council.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading. Just set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. Councilor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill 18-2024, an ordinance authorizing issuance by the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, of its sales and use tax revenue refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2024, and providing other details in connection therewith. On first reading, order it published, public hearings set for Monday, September 9, 2024, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it takes effect immediately.
We have a motion and a second by Council Stites. Would the clerk Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Councilor O'Me, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 19-2024, An Ordinance Amending Title 19, Article 4 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Disposition of Lost or Abandoned Property. Discrepancy exists between Code Sections 19-80 and 19-77 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the Disposition of Lost or Abandoned Property. To correct that discrepancy, the Wheat Ridge Police Department is requesting that Code Section 19-80 be amended to render it consistent with Code Section 19-77 and standard operating procedures of the police department.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading. To set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It is not quasi judicial. May, um, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 19-2024, An Ordinance Amending Title 19, Article 4 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Disposition of Lost or Abandoned Property on first reading. Order published. Public hearing set for Monday, September 9, 2024, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and City Council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Eight. Councilor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution Number 4020-2024, A Resolution Amending, Amending the City's Administrative Fines Schedule to Provide a Fine Schedule for Short-Term Rental Code Violations.
Thank you. This is going to be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, do you have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. We'll go back to Ally Scheck, Deputy City Manager.
Okay, Deputy Manager Scheck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Again, we talked about this on June 3. And we talked about amending the fee schedule to include administrative citations specifically for STR violations, short-term rental violations. And the amounts that we originally provided mirrored that of the current code enforcement fine schedule. But you gave us consensus, and I should say you gave us consensus, to move forward with providing a fine schedule, but that the amount should increase from our proposal to, due to the commercial nature of the STR program. That's, that's what we heard from you. So therefore, we're recommending the following. So after an initial notice to a first-time violator, the first citation would be $300, the second would be $600, the third would be $1,000. And if that does not cure the violation, from there, we would move to either revoke the license or summons the violator to court if no license exists. So why we're here this evening with a resolution is that you all approve fees and fines each year in the budget. It's in the fee schedule of the budget. And normally, yeah, these kinds of citations are included there. But you can amend the fee schedule by resolution outside of the budget process. It's unusual that we do this. But the licensing team is requesting that you adopt this citation schedule now so that we can use this additional enforcement tool to get to work and actually fulfill your goals as intended. So that's why we're here this evening. Thank you. I hope that the new amounts we're proposing are more amenable to you. Thanks.
Thank you. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this, so I'll go to questions from council. Do you have any questions of council before I ask for a motion? Hearing none, Councilor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 40-2024, A Resolution Amending, Amending the City's Administrative Fines Schedule to Provide a Fine Schedule for Short-Term Rental Code Violations. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppe. Do we have discussion upon the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Nine. Councilor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution Number 41-2024, A Resolution Amending the 2024 Fiscal Year General Fund Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation in the Amount of $200,000 for the Purpose of Accepting Congestionally Directed Spending for the Clear Creek Makerspace Phase Two Project.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this item?
Just real quickly, I think you all remember this. We're very excited to, and thank Senator Hickenmuper in Congress for providing this funding for us. This will be a pass-through to Local Works for their Makerspace program. They're going to use this to purchase some additional equipment and to provide some training, onsite training for members.
Okay. This is not the party budget?
Not the what budget?
Not the party budget?
No party budget, no.
Okay, no party budget. Okay. Thank you for that clarity. Are there any, I have no one from the public signed up to speak on this. Are there any questions from council? Are they the one I just asked? Okay. Hearing none, Councilor Snell, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 41-2024, A Resolution Amending the 2024 Fiscal Year General Fund Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation in the Amount of $200,000 for the Purpose of Accepting Congestionally Directed Spending for the Clear Creek Makerspace Phase Two Project. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Dozeman. Do we have discussion on the motion? Councilor Holtein.
Thank you. I just really want to thank everyone who's involved in putting these requests into our congressional representatives. And then, you know, we get to this point because we've got great representatives that listen to us and value the kind of impact investments like this have on our community. And there's, it's, it's an interesting process because they put in the requests and they get it to a certain point. And then there's kind of a loss of control at that point because it kind of goes into a murky, big, crazy thing. So the fact that we are, you know, frequently getting the requests that we're asking for, I think, A, shows that the things we're asking for and the work that we're doing in this community, in this community are actually like really meaningful and being recognized by people very remotely, you know, who really don't know firsthand what's happening here. So we're putting forth good requests because we're doing great work through great partnerships. And part of that is because we, you know, go out to DC every spring and make those requests and make those relationships and then maintain them throughout the year. So just want to recognize everyone, but also that we keep getting funded because we're doing great things. And let's keep doing that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And just very quickly, I'd like to highlight the discussion in, in the staff report that says the completion of the Phase Two buildout allows Clear Creek, Clear Creek Makerspace to transform from a community-centered launchpad into a full-scale manufacturing site. And I, I don't think we can emphasize the difference there enough. This is not just going to be hobbyists and people that, that have interest in doing something. This is going to be for actual business startups that will benefit both the community and the individuals involved in tremendous ways. So I'm, I am so glad that, that we've been able to get this thing pushed through. And the money's there to turn this into a full-scale manufacturing site.
Thank you. Councilor O'Me.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank staff and thank Senator Hickenmuper in Congress for passing this and echo what my other city council members already said. Thank you.
Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I'd like to also thank not only staff, but Local Works and Executive Director Paige Piper for all of their work in making this a reality. This has been a long, long time in the making. And I think this is a wonderful asset, not only to Wheat Ridge and District Four, but the broader community. It really allows creatives to have a space to use equipment that they may not otherwise be able to afford or house in their home or their office. And this is just a testament, like Council Member Holtein said, to the work that we're doing and the direction that we're moving in and the vision that we're creating for the city of Wheat Ridge. And so I just want to give kudos to staff and, and my colleagues in, in seeing this through. And, I mean, we're, we're securing a lot of grants. And, I mean, we're doing a great job. And I also think that that's a testament to your leadership and, Mr. Mayor, and the regional efforts. And I just appreciate the, the collaboration and the work that we're doing, not only with each other, but also neighboring cities to, to address these really significant issues in our community and also provide really amazing spaces.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. This brings us to Agenda Item Number 10. Councilor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 42-2024, A Resolution Supporting the Jefco Housing Blueprint, A Collaborative Plan to Increase Housing Options That Are Affordable in Jefferson County and Facilitate Partnerships Across Jurisdictions and Agencies Within Jefferson County. At issue, a 2022 Housing Needs Study Assessment Study commissioned by Colorado Gives Foundation Recommended Convening Key Stakeholders Across Jefferson County to Explore Strategic Actions, Develop Partnerships, Support Countywide Housing Efforts, and Pursue Additional State and Federal Resources. In response, Colorado Gives Foundation launched the Jefco Housing Steering Committee in 2022 and to create and innovate an approach to housing throughout the county, focusing specifically on housing for residents earning 60% to 120% of the area median income. City Council is asked to endorse the Jefco Housing Blueprint in support of the housing goals and strategies for Jefferson County.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. That will be me this evening. I'll try to make this quick, but there was a lot of work put into this and I want to give it a little bit of its due. So as, as Ms. Hoppe mentioned, we created this steering committee to develop this housing blueprint. So I'll skip right to the first slide. Colorado Gives Foundation did commission this housing study back in '21. The housing study concluded that Jefco does not have enough housing inventory to meet the needs of the community. In fact, Jefco has a housing shortage of 20,000 housing units across all income levels and housing types. Options are very limited for middle-income households, especially with incomes between 60% and 120% of the area median income. That includes our young families, seniors, and many essential workers, such as teachers, nurses, and firefighters. Housing affordability is a regional challenge that requires a regional solution. And there are many misconceptions about what affordable housing is. So the approach that Colorado Gives Foundation underwent was first to create this Jefco Housing Steering Committee. Both the mayor, Starker, and myself are on that committee. We're currently on the executive committee. And our first job was to create this blueprint, which we're presenting to you this evening. Jefco, Colorado Gives Foundation also created an investment fund of $15 million that they are using to build and preserve affordable housing in Jefferson County. And the third prong of the approach is to build awareness of affordable housing challenges across Jefferson County. Steering Committee began meeting in January of '23. The first phase was educational in nature and focused on policy and regulatory tools that are available to local governments. The second phase began in July of '23 and was focused on a collaborative strategy that we could all work on together and support local efforts. There was foundational agreements that were all agreed upon from all the different stakeholders to begin with. You'll see in the blueprint that we invested a lot of time as a group in some very informational, important foundational agreements with such a diverse group of stakeholders and needs, establishing baseline core values and guiding principles that we could all get behind was critical in establishing not just what we work on together, but also how we will work together. So the Affordable Housing Blueprint is anchored by three pillars. The first pillar is focused on goals and strategies that better engage our community. Their sub-goals include educate the public and change the narrative about affordable housing, engage employers and include them in affordable housing conversations, identify, train, and mobilize Jefco citizens and stakeholders as part of this conversation. The second pillar is focused on goals and strategies that support local government efforts, such as supporting best practices in policy and process, identify pivotal moments in policy and development process for support. And the final pillar is focused on goals and strategies that facilitate partnerships and collaboration, such as identifying policy efforts at the regional, state, and federal level where Jefferson County can engage as a united front, strategic transportation and housing partnerships, and leveraging networks to ensure timely knowledge sharing that facilitate successful partnerships. So we are here this evening asking for City Council's endorsement. This blueprint does not commit to the city financially in any way or really policy directives in any way. That was really part of the agreement is that we all have our autonomy and the cities have their own land use discussions and regulations and rules and policies. But working together more regionally is going to help us, we hope, with this affordable housing crisis. So City Council's endorsement of this signals not only your support of the goals and strategies, but also your commitment to doing your part and commitment that we will be, will be needed for everyone in order for this plan to be successful. The current phase, we're asking all the organizations who were represented on the steering committee to endorse this blueprint. I believe Mayor, Mayor Starker just went to the Edgewater City Council, presented the other day, and they unanimously endorsed it. Our hope is to secure all endorsements by early September and officially release the blueprint to the community by the end of September. So to implement the blueprint, the steering committee will remain in an oversight role and will provide guidance to provide strategies as we move forward. The blueprint is a living document allowing us to learn from our progress and adapt as needed and build on success. So the initial blueprint timeline is about three years. Two of the core values are inclusion and collaboration. We will need everyone working together to find the right solutions for housing affordability in Jefco. And two additional core values are education and leadership. One of the best ways you and your constituents can help in getting, is by getting informed about the housing needs in Jefco and possible solutions that can work with that. We're asking for your endorsement of this blueprint. And, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to add to that?
Okay, I will, you, you certainly covered it very well. All I will say, as I sat on this committee since it started, and I'm really happy that we're at this point. This has really energized, I think, a lot of communities in our county to, to think more thoughtfully and more appropriately about affordable housing and how it fits into their community. What I really like about this plan is that it, you know, we spent a long time with our community developing our, our housing strategy and action plan. And this is a plan that works in collaboration with that. It doesn't supplant that in any way. It's very much a focus of local control, but it energizes other, other members, community members and throughout the county. So I hope that you will take it into consideration. Thank you. We have no members of the public who have signed up to speak on this, so I'll go to questions from council. Any questions on the Affordable Housing Blueprint before I ask for a motion? All right. Hearing none. Councilor Hoppe, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 42-2024, A Resolution Supporting the Jefco Housing Blueprint, A Collaborative Plan to Increase Housing Options That Are Affordable in Jefferson County and Facilitate Partnerships Across Jurisdictions and Agencies Within Jefferson County.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Stites. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just, I'll echo some of the comments that I, I made in the, the last agenda item in regards to the collaboration and regional approach that we are taking to address many of these issues. I really appreciate that it's more of like an education and learning opportunity as well as cross-collaboration with multiple agencies. And the fact that it spells out directly that the control should remain local because I think that we have created a wonderful plan that suits our community well and can really offer some advice into this blueprint. And so I appreciate your work on this and giving, you know, your insights into what that process looked like here in Wheat Ridge. And I really hope to see this collaboration effort be a positive thing for Jefferson County because it's extremely challenging for myself and young families to be able to set their roots in this community. And if we don't have younger families and those, also the, the seniors that are living on fixed incomes, being able to afford, afford this community, then, you know, like we're losing the essence of what is Wheat Ridge. So I just, I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, everything I read in here indicates that the folks that have put this together and worked on it very hard are listening to what, not only what the community wants, but what it needs. And then the approach is, is not heavy-handed. And, and it seems malleable enough for cities to adopt what the county is recommending. But I did have one particular issue on the policy platform page. Under Community Development, the third bullet says Reform Construction Defect Laws. I think if the state of Colorado can actually... I think if the state of Colorado can actually reform its construction defect laws and allow the builders to build middle-income housing that has been the target of most of the plaintiffs' buyer for the past 20 years. If we can finally reform our construction defect laws, it will go a long way to increasing the amount of middle-income housing that's available.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
And I'll say thank you very much, councilors, for your support on this item. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 11. Councilor Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, I am happy to close this out tonight. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 43-2024, a resolution in support of the ballot measure to continue RTD's authorization to collect, retain, and spend revenues from all sources without imposing any new tax or increasing any tax rate as originally approved by voters in 1999. At issue, the RTD Board has referred a ballot measure to the November 5, 2024 election to exempt RTD from any future taxpayers' bill of rights taper revenue limitations. Board Director Marjorie Sloan has requested an endorsement from the city of Wheat Ridge in support of this ballot measure.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have any further staff report on this issue?
Just real quickly, this is a step that RTD is taking that most governments in Colorado have taken, including Wheat Ridge. We've de-brused from the taper requirement. If this does not pass, RTD does estimate they'll have to return about 100 to 200 million a year in revenues. And I think that's going to be, it's very difficult to figure out who that money should go back to, first of all. If they do that, they estimate they would have to cut about 20% of bus and train service within two years. So just a reminder to, as Ms. Hulteen read into the issue, this is not a new tax or tax increase. It's just allowing RTD to keep that revenue. That is above their taper limit.
Thank you. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this item, so I'll go to questions of council. Any questions of council on this item? Seeing none, may I have a motion on this item? Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 43-2024, a resolution in support of the ballot measure to continue RTD's authorization to collect, retain, and spend revenues from all sources without imposing any new tax or increasing any tax rate as originally approved by voters in 1999. Second?
We have a motion by, and a second by Councilor Ohm. Will, do we have discussion on the motion? Hearing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. That will conclude our agenda items. We'll get back to my agenda. And I think we're probably going to go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Nothing else from staff, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you so much. City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Goff?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Oh, we're rolling, we're rolling through it. Okay, Elected Officials Matters, let me start with Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to recognize Rebecca from Jefferson Center for Mental Health for her very poignant words at the beginning of our meeting tonight. And we are truly fortunate, both in Wheat Ridge and in Jefco, to have such an incredible resources as Jefferson Center. And I'm just in continual amazement of how much programming they have and how easy they do make it for folks to engage with them and get resources. And it's definitely needed in today's world. And I just wanted to give them another round of kudos because they deserve it. Also, just a very quick note, and I know we've talked about this, but schools in session, please remember there are school zones where you can't speed. Reduced speed is important in school zones. And I'm hearing from folks and seeing some, just not acknowledging of school zones. And I know it's a habit that we get in during summer, but school's back in session, so please, please drive safely and obey the school zone signs. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you. I also want to thank Rebecca for her comments tonight. Suicide has impacted our family more than once and its devastation for entire communities is felt for a long, long time. And I appreciate that we've got Suicide Awareness Month and Suicide Awareness Week, but really Suicide Awareness is every day. And I particularly appreciate that she closed with, you know, telling someone that you're close with that you love them and care about them because people just can't hear that enough. You rarely actually know how much people are struggling on the inside when you run into them. So as a community, I think it's one of the things that makes us strong. So let's take that value and do it year-round. And Happiness Gardens has a workday tomorrow. So if you're up bright and early and want to enjoy some of the dirty magic over at Happiness Gardens, workday starts, I think, at about 7:00 AM before it gets too hot. And it's just a great opportunity to pull a couple weeds and hang out with some of the best people in the city. And along those lines, there is a garden tour, a community farm and garden tour called Rooted in Community that features both Happiness Gardens and Roost on 32nd. That tour is on September 7. And if you Google Rooted in Community Alliance Center, you'll find the tickets to that. And we start here in Wheat Ridge, Jenny, the kitchen that Jenny's part of. So we're going to be eating a lot of good stuff. And I think Wheelie Bean's going to be there providing some coffee. And then there's a, it's a bus tour, lunches at Happiness, and then we conclude with a tour and happy hour at Roost Gardens. So if you want to just see all the good dirty magic in our city, September 7 is a good day for it.
Thank you. Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I do not have to remind everybody what a beautiful city Wheat Ridge is. But I sometimes do have to remind people that we need to keep it that way. Please don't litter and pick up after your pets.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to announce and remind the community about the Wine Walk on Saturday, September 7 from 4:00 to 8:00 PM along 38th Avenue. Several local businesses will be involved with that, including Sweet Ridge Studios, which will have artwork on display. And my kids have really enjoyed some of their summer art camp programs. And you can find tickets at WheatRidgeChamber.org. And then I'd also, I had the opportunity, or I have the opportunity to participate in the Leadership Jefferson County for their 40th anniversary this year. And we just wrapped up our retreat this last Thursday and Friday. And, you know, it just, there are so many amazing leaders in Jefferson County that are talking about these very issues that we discuss up here on the dais and creating ideas on how to connect community and how to partner with organizations in the area to address significant issues such as homelessness, food insecurity. And I just, it just reinvigorated and had me in awe for the two days of just how passionate and purposeful people are and intentional in helping others in this community. And it's an amazing place to live, not only in Wheat Ridge, but in Jefferson County. And I'm really grateful to have grown up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a very special thing happening at Five Fridges Farm on the 7th of September that I'd like to invite all the councilors to and remind them to please contact any of their constituents that have large animals. That would be anything that's not a dog, cat, or parakeet. No, chickens actually cannot go to a regular shelter either. So we saw this last week with the fire on Table Mountain. It's a very serious thing. If you're interested in animal evacuation for the city of Wheat Ridge, we're going to have Commander Lucas Hunt talking about our emergency systems for helping for evacuation here in Wheat Ridge. We will also have the emergency manager for Jefferson County. And if it's a nice warm day, I'm going to have root beer floats for everybody. It's going to be a really good time. It's not going to be a lot of, it's going to be just a little bit of conversation, but really information about how to move your animals. And I would really appreciate, even if you don't have big animals, but you want to lend a hand in that situation and just want to learn more about helping your neighbors, I really invite any citizen resident of Wheat Ridge. What time is it? Thank you, I was like, you guys got to talk. It's going to be from 4:00 to 6:00 at Five Fridges Farm. I think it's listed on the city website. It's also listed on my website, the Five Fridges Farm website, everywhere. Please come. If you think about it, send me an email and let me know you're coming. So right now, I think, well, I want everybody to come. Thanks.
And we don't need a egg timer here for council, council use? We're doing, we're doing good. Councilor Ohm?
I'll keep mine brief. I have, I have one request from staff. I've noticed that Kipling and 38th is having a lot of accidents. And one observation is, I noticed that the light doesn't have a green arrow. And so what happens is that people, it's still green. And so they can at will take a left turn. There's a lot of T-bone intersections. So I don't know if that's a conversation we could have with C.D. Having said that, on my way over to city council tonight, I watched somebody blow through the red arrow turn light on Wattsworth and 38th. So I don't know what the solution is, but...
Yeah, red light violators are horrible. That could be part of our photo radar system at some point, if we want to. We are looking at 38th and Kipling specifically, though, as for safety improvements. It'd be part of the West 38th Avenue project.
It's, yeah, it's usually a couple times a month I see it, so. And then the second thing is, I just want to tell all my city council members that I often will have conversations with other city council members, mayors from different communities, constituents, you know. And I always brag about our city council. And I say that, you know, our city council, I'm very fortunate. I'm humbled that I have a city council that we all get along. We may not always agree, but we're always civil. And I'm very proud of that. And there's a lot of other city councils out there that are not that way. So I do not take that for granted. So, you know, I just want, I just want to say thank you to everybody for that. Thank you.
I just want to say keep it up. Mayor Pro Tim Hoppe, actually?
I was for three years. I was for three years. Now I'm just Councilwoman Hoppe. I have nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tim Stites? Can we all be Mayor Pro Tim?
Well, we can be, yes, yes. Everybody gets to be. You and you. I just wanted to thank all of the people who came in to speak tonight. It's great to see that passion. And I think most everybody was from District 3. But it's a big deal, what we did tonight, putting things on the ballot and giving our citizens an opportunity to vote and have some say in that. So really appreciate all the people that came in tonight to speak. I also want to thank District 3 resident Marjorie Cypher, who opened up her home and her beautiful garden last week for the Wheat Ridge Business Association. We were able to go and have one of the after-hours there. It was a lot of fun. And she really does put a lot of work into her garden. It is absolutely immaculate and beautiful. And then this week, Local Works is hosting Live Local event at Moonrise Cafe, 5:30, 7:30. If you're interested in tickets, get tickets at WeAreLocalWorks.com.
What date was that?
Did I say, I'm sorry, it's Thursday, this Thursday, coming up 5:30, 7:30 at Moonrise Garden. So if you can find it, find it by Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I want to just start out, I think the Mayor Pro Tim must have been reading off of my, off of my notes here. Thank all the folks who came in tonight to talk, to talk with their council, who expressed their opinions. We appreciate that. I'll tell you, you know, we, we're trying as a council to do the best we can. And the best way that we can do that is for people to communicate, talk with us, express their views, and really work to make this a great city together. Let's see, I want to thank my councilors for their affirmative vote to pass the Affordable Housing Blueprint and put the RTD ballot question, support that, to go to the voters. I want to, hope everybody has a great Labor Day holiday. We will not be here next week because of the Labor Day holiday, but I hope you will be able to enjoy that holiday with friends and family and be safe doing it. And then, most of all, schools in and, but they'll be on the, on the Labor Day break. But please drive slowly and safely through our city so that everybody comes home at night safe and sound. If there's no more business to come before the council, we will stand adjourned with our thanks. Thank you.